Rowe Kyle Tina.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. As everyone noticed, we have placed a wreath in memory of Roger and that will be given to Charlene sometime after the meeting this evening. Did have a chance to talk to her today. She's very much in need of everyone's prayers and I think we as council members and the board should make ourselves available to her if she needs anything. I got a chuckle out of her. She said, "You know, a dishwasher could go out or something and I might need you." Well, just call. We've got to help people in time of sadness and I know I'd be there for her if she needs anything, but if it's a dishwasher, I may have to call somebody else to help me. But anyway, we was a little upbeat with that and we need to continue to keep the family and our thoughts and prayers. To me, Roger was a person that, he always made decisions based on his beliefs and I thought Roger always tried to take the best interest in the citizens of our community and I appreciate him for standing up for what he as a council member thought was correct. And I know he'll be missed and let's just continue to pray. Any other council members, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Just not to say we all miss him. Thank the world of him. You find out how sometimes the politics is the least of things and how there's a lot of other things, a lot more important than that. And it don't take us but a heartbeat to big change just from one minute to the next. And I just, I know we miss him and the family miss him.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say, I've been praying for Roger for a long time. Off of school, after school, friends with him here. A lot of times did a very young thing. And when we left, we're still friends. And like I said, we're all gonna miss him and I've been praying for Charlene and I'm gonna call her again and offer my help if she needs him.
I want to say three quick things. Roger Gribble's a smart man. When I first moved back here working at the bank, Capital Bank, I had a project that involved some federal implications. And I took this project to a couple of local investors and they said they liked the whole project, but they want to make sure that their man takes a look at this before they decide to invest past or whatever the situation may be. Well, I went along with this guy, another guy from I in Boone, West Carolina. We went to the east coast and low and behold, it was a guy named Roger Gribble. I didn't know Roger, I knew some family members. He sat down there, not that I'm trying to say I'm smart. This project that we're doing was very, 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 very intense. This guy that presented it said, "There's no way this guy will know what's going on." Roger knew everything was going on in that packet from front to back, every I, every T. Smart man, smart man. Roger was a bulldog. He'll fight you. There's a guy in this room right here who can tell you that he'll stand up and fight you if he has to, especially when he thinks he's right. I remember the first time, right after getting elected for this position, I went over to Roger Gribble's house just to talk and I said, and he says, I basically joked at what we got ourselves into. He says, "Well, I don't really know. I know how to handle federal government, but I'm not sure if I can handle city or not." And I says, "Well, guess what? I don't really know from either angle, federal or city." Well, and I told him, I said, "Roger, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna sit back and just kind of be a team player and not say much at all." And he abruptly stopped me, he says, "If you're not gonna fight..." And I spend my, a lot of my Saturday nights and Monday nights on the college basketball court arguing with college basketball coaches. I thought I knew how to fight. But he told me, he stopped me at mid-sentence, says, "If you're not gonna fight for what's right, you might as well go to the house." And he said, and his words were, if it's against me, as he worded it, "If it's against me, it's for me. If you don't want to fight, you're not gonna do any of that no good." He taught me how to fight. And yeah, we fought. We didn't agree, as was said there a minute ago, but you know, I always remember, you know, sometimes I tried to be the liaison because I knew Roger's hearing wanted the best and I would always make sure he got me this little head nod, he acknowledged what was said. Yeah, we disagreed on a lot of things. But I always remember, when we got into an argument, after it's over, I'd look at him and go, a little nod of the head, say, "All right, let's wait and fight." And I appreciate him teaching me how to fight, you know, behind this table. He's a good guy and I'll miss him.
Thank you.
Let's pray for the family to have faith and support in the coming days and hope that they're able to cope.
Need that more than anything, don't it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. Item three on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 11th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Approve. I make the motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no's? I hear none. Item four A is the proclamation Animal Control Month.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Like I say, as you know, the previous months, we've been recognized in our city departments and I promise we're getting close to the end, so we won't be doing many more of these. But like I say, I think it is important that we always recognize our employees for the jobs that they do. This month has been proclaimed as Animal Control Appreciation Month for September of 2017. Animal control officers have a job that a lot of people wouldn't want or couldn't do. Every day, they work long hours under difficult and often dangerous circumstances to provide necessary services to our community through our law enforcement and public safety duties. Animal control work includes everything from keeping people safe from raves and dangerous animals to investigating extreme animal cruelty and neglect. They witness the aftermath of hoarding, starvation, and animal fighting. They are often at risk when they respond to calls. They protect helpless animals by rescuing them from injury, disease, and abandonment. And they help give sanctuary to homeless animals. Whereas the Newport Animal Control and staff provide outstanding service on a daily basis to the residents of Newport, Tennessee, and whereas the Newport Animal Control Officers and staff dedicate many long hours of service to this community and fulfill their commitment to provide the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And whereas the City of Newport officials would like to take this time to recognize, thank, and commend the Animal Control Officers, the Newport Animal Control Officers and staff for their dedicated service they provide to various public safety and public service agencies in the City of Newport. And now therefore, Mayor Connie Ball has hereby proclaimed September as Animal Control Appreciation Month and we call upon the citizens of Newport, Tennessee to recognize the men and women at the Newport Animal Control Center and staff for their service in our community. This is witness thereof. Mayor Ball set his hand to the affixed seal of the City of Newport on the 12th day of September. So on behalf of Newport City Council and Mayor Ball, I'd like to present you this proclamation.
Thank you.
I don't think people realize what they have to go through with unless you've ever been there and I've seen what you do behind the scenes. All of us appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Pictures.
Wait a minute.
I'd like to take just a few minutes to let everyone know how much I really do appreciate what my staff does. They do a lot that's behind the scenes that no one knows about. They work diligently to try to find all these animals a home. They work long hours. They hear thank you very seldom. But I do really appreciate everything that they do and I appreciate everything that you all do for us as well. And I just want to say thank you.
Tight look, Bert.
No.
They can't be here.
I'm gonna put that off.
Okay.
The Steel and Foster and Eisenhower, they just got into their new building. They had all intentions and worlds of coming, but they were crammed full, had people sitting there waiting and they couldn't leave them sitting there in office while they ran down here. So they said, "We'll try to work it out next time we meet." So they said they really appreciate it.
Okay, the next item is a report from City Administrator James Fincham.
Well, Mayor, I don't know if I'm sad or happy to report, but I have nothing to report.
Don't get me wrong, we're sitting down. Thank you, James. Okay, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing. For item six, do we have a report from the Tender Preservation Alliance?
We're rolling right along here.
Okay, item eight under rural business is the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2017-15. Terry, you want to read that?
Yes, Mayor, I'll read that into the record. It's ordinance number 2017-J-15. An ordinance amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Two, Beer, Adding Section Two-Dash-Two-O-Six, Outdoor Serving Area Restrictions. This would be the second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, Rowe Kyle. Okay, Rowe Kyle.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
No.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you.
They've done everything it was supposed to do and there's a lot of restrictions on that. It's not just like turning somebody loose. They've done everything that the Beer Board and stuff asked them to do.
Okay. Item A, under Section Nine, New Business, Consideration of the First Reading of Ordinance 2017-Dash-16, Amending the Zoning Map of the City of Newport from R1 Low Density Residential to C2 General Commercial District Zone.
It's my understanding that Dr. Subicul would like to have the piece of property that he has purchased, do you guys have a map? I'm not sure what we...
Yeah, we do.
Have that piece of property rezoned as a C2 out of an R2. It is adjacent to, it's right there on the Cosby Highway. It's, well, it fronts English Street technically, but it is adjacent to a piece of commercial property on the Cosby Highway. There is precedent for this. Across the street there, there is a piece of property that is not, that does not front the Cosby Highway that sits as a C2. And it is my understanding, and you guys can ask me or Dr. Subicul any questions if you'd like, but it will be a call-in pickup service only. There won't be any dine-in. It will be no drive-up in order. We will have very, very few cars in and out of there. There is a buffer property between that one, you own the one behind that also, right? And you plan on operating the business out of the, yes. So the traffic will come off of English, onto from English Street and then enter back on English Street without the property in front of it, which is zone commercial, would be the only property that would even see the traffic, I think, if I'm understanding it correctly.
I think Mr. Subicul sort of proven himself. After about 30 years here, y'all eating in his kitchen and stuff, it's not the same as the rest of it, so cherry out and stuff. He's done everything he's supposed to do so far, so I don't see any problem with it.
Do you make a motion to approve it on the first reading?
Yes, sir, I will.
Do we have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Rowe Kyle, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you, Manny.
Thank you for what you've done for the community.
Item B is Consideration of Resolution 2017-Dash-12, Authorizing the City of Newport to Participate in the TML Driver Safety Grant.
Mayor, this is a grant through the TML Pool, which is our insurance company. It's another matching grant. We did one a couple of months ago on safety equipment. This is the Driver Safety Grant and we are asked to do this every two years. And what it boils down to is they like you to take all your drivers and run a driver's history on them to see if they've had any infractions or DUIs or anything in another jurisdiction that you might be unaware of. And so it's just to safeguard us and the insurance company. And again, this is a matching grant. It'll pay for half of the cost of having that done. We've done it in the past.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, Paul.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Item C is Consideration of Resolution 2017-Dash-13, Authorizing the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Physical Year 2018 Police Vehicle Interfund Loan Capital Outlay Notes.
Mr. Mayor, this is from last month when the board did approve the purchase of one vehicle for the police department. And after looking at the financing options that Ford offered, they wanted to charge 6% which is quite a bit above what you can get locally around 2%. So what this is, is basically a three-year loan. The general fund is going to loan the drug fund the money to pay for it outright. Drug fund will pay the general fund back over a period of three years at zero interest. So we're borrowing from ourselves.
That's good.
Thank you for looking into that, saying it's money.
And we have checked with the state and everybody to make sure we're on solid ground doing that and they said, "Yes, it's common sense."
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Hear none. Item D is Consideration of Resolution 2017-Dash-14, Administration Service for the Home Grant.
Mayor, what this is, of course, every year or every couple of years when it becomes available, the home grant, sometimes it's every year, depends on how long it takes to run them out. But anyway, the last several years, we have hired Evan Sanders and his group to be the administrators of that and it's at no cost to us. It comes out of the grant and so they have, that way they take care of all the legwork force and we don't have to get somebody tied up to do all the administrative part of it. And so this is something we've done, sir, about, well, the last, I'd say, close to 10 years. And so that's, y'all have to prove, every time we do it, y'all have to prove us allowing them to be the administrators of it.
There's a lot of people depending on this.
Oh, yeah.
It's been really a good program when the money goes where it's supposed to go.
Yes. A lot, a lot of families have been helped by this program over the years.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item E is Consideration of Resolution 2017-Dash-15, Inspection Services for the Home Grant.
Okay, this goes hand in hand with our prior business. When the work is done on these properties, these homes that qualify for the grants, we have to have state-certified inspectors to come in and inspect the work to make sure it's been done properly, that what there, what has been submitted for payment has been done and has been up to the specs. And so again, we have to hire those inspectors and this is just, y'all approving us to have the ability to hire the inspectors to come in and do and inspect the homes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item F is Consideration of Resolution 2017-Dash-16, Renaming Cherry Street to One TVET Way.
First of all, before I make a motion to approve this, congratulations to Lucas Graham.
Absolutely.
Also, a lot of people don't know the Arrow Pro Building up where you get to Cosby High School. It's becoming occupied as well. Congratulations, Lucas.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions about the road?
Tell us, tell us the people about TVET right quick. I know other than long as in the paper.
Well, first of all, they're an outstanding company, so we're very fortunate to get them in here. They are a, for the most part, they are a defense contractor. And they were, their customers are some of the largest in the world. They sell to Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, and Boeing as well. Those are the three primaries. But this company has seen a huge growth spike in the last three years and they have the potential to grow much larger than what they are right now. They will be moving over here from Greenville. They've got 22 full-time employees in Greenville. They have 45 nationwide. Those 22 will be more than likely all will be coming over here.
They still got the one in Greenville, too, ahead and in.
For now. But this, the MPI, former MPI building will be their new national headquarters and the spec building will become their assembly area and their mass storage facility is what I'm moving forward. They, the interaction that I've had with their CEO so far, Tracy Solomon, he's a, he's an outstanding guy, first of all. He's done a lot of community investment work on his own in Greenville, including renovations of the Capitol, Capitol Theater in downtown Greenville. And he did that on his, on his own dime just because he wanted to make sure the community was doing better up there. And he's sure means he's gonna do the same, that same kind of interaction here. So we got that look forward to. He's gonna be a good neighbor. They pay very well. So as they grow, they'll continue to pass along that opportunity to their employees. I can't wait. I hope, I can't wait to see what happens in the next year or two with these guys. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Make a motion. We change the name to Tvet? Tvet? T-E-V-E-T?
Yep.
Tvet?
Tvet.
Scotty.
Tvet.
Okay. Sorry.
I'll be better off just to spell it.
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item G is Consideration of Farmer's Market Grant Physical Year 2017-2018.
This is just an application for marketing dollars and the maximum, the State of Tennessee, the TAEP, will allow us to request is $1,000 which is the same as it was last year. And so that's what we're doing and that covers radio advertising, newspaper advertising, and some printing through Newport Printing. And so that's what we just need. And our grant is, you're the umbrella for the grant.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
You being the City of Newport.
I make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none.
You see, 'cause I appreciate what y'all have done. I see every week and it seem like there's more and more people. Y'all spend a lot of your time to making sure everything's right up there and I appreciate what y'all have done.
Well, we appreciate the support we've getting and the community is responding. The producers are responding and the people in the community are responding and it's been a great season. The weather hasn't always cooperated, but the people, the people have been good. And we've had a lot of help from, again, I think the media does a lot more than they get paid for, but I appreciate that.
Thank you. Item H is Consideration of Parade Permit from Coff County High School to Celebrate CCHS 100th Homecoming.
Mayor, kind of, I see her walking up, but I spoke with Chief Schultz prior to the meeting about this issue and he, and of course, he can speak for himself obviously, but he felt confident that no parade permit was needed to handle this. It was a small enough, an event that he didn't feel like that a parade permit was warranted that it could be done without a parade.
Okay.
Well, then I get to sit back down.
Well, yeah.
I just want to make sure. I just appreciate what you're doing. I know how much hard work you've put into getting this 100th year thing and football team play and all that. I appreciate the job you're doing. There's been a big response out of it.
There has been a big response. So just to clarify, 'cause what we're looking to do is on that 29th is to revive the traditional homecoming parade with the band and like maybe five floats and some old cars. And we want to go down by Debbie's Drive-In, take a right, go to Cosby Highway, take a right, come back around Hedrick Drive. The entire route is 1.1 mile. We would approximately start time at 1:00, so we'd be finished no later than 2:15 to have a pep rally to end the day.
Wonderful.
I think the issue was, and again, Chief, correct me if I get out of white, they're not gonna be crossing any intersections. So you're not having, you're actually not walking, walking off the road. Because like she said, they're gonna be making just some right turns and in the right-hand lane, so you're not having to block intersections or anything. So I think that was the...
That makes my life easier. Great. So will everybody come out and support the parade that day?
All right. We will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item I is Consideration of Request to Utilize Service-Credited Hours.
That's now, that's the chief. If we could all know how important this is, but for such trivial amount, we'd probably disappoint us if we have to deal with it. I have an employee who was, who has just a few hours left in their quote-unquote third bucket to extended leave and their service time credit and they are unable to return to work right now and I've asked, I requested of you all to go ahead and approve this, get back in that third bucket and get just a few hours.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Morris.
Item J, Discussion of Open Alderman Position.
The mayor's asked me to kind of explain the position on this. Of course, I'm, I want to ask Mr. Hurston just a second to read what the charter says. But in conversations over the last few weeks since the untimely passing of Mr. Gribble, in speaking with each of the aldermen individually and also with the mayor, it has been the consensus of them that we follow the same procedure that has been followed the last time or two that there has been a vacancy in the alderman, in an alderman's position. And of course, usually, sometimes it's through attrition, well, it's always through attrition, but sometimes it's through the passing and sometimes it's through just someone resigning. And sadly, it's through someone passing this time. But as the saying goes, the show must go on. And so we have an obligation to the citizens to fill that seat. And so what the board would like to do is to allow any qualified candidate to put in, submit a resume to the city. And what I have done, and I mentioned this to a couple of you, I have, are you all good with the deadline of noon on September the 27th? That's two weeks from tomorrow. That gives everybody a full two weeks to submit a resume if they're interested. So that gives plenty of time for the word to get around and someone to come in. Is that, is that good with y'all? So the deadline will be on September the 20, Wednesday, September the 27th at noon. One thing that I will make very clear, we have this happen at a lower level, this is a very important position, but we're gonna follow procedure regardless. If we tell you it's 12 o'clock noon, it's 12 o'clock noon. We always have somebody come in at 15 after and want us to accept an application for what... We always have somebody come in at 15:00 after and want us to accept an application for whatever position it may be. And I can tell you, we will not. We are very strict with adhering to the rules, because if you take them at 15:00 after, well, what if somebody comes in at 20:00 after and 12:30 and so on? So, and yes, we'll go by our clock. I'm sorry, that's what we've got to do. And it's not an atomic clock, it's just a, it's just a clock, but that's what we're going to go by. My advice, and I never have understood this, is why do you wait till the last minute to worry about getting caught by a train or a traffic light, and you don't make the deadline if you know you're interested in something? But anyway, I digress. And so, Terry, if you would, please, would you read the, read, read the section in the charter that, that addresses this, please?
It's section six of the charter, titled Qualifications of Mayor and Alderman-Vacancies. No person shall be eligible for the office of mayor or alderman unless he, and of course, that should say he or she, is a citizen of the city of Newport as hereunder incorporated. In case of death, removal or resignation of any of the officers of such corporation, the mayor and alderman have the power to fill such vacancy to the unexpired term.
Thank you. And that is all that is said in the charter. I've had several people, since Mr. Gribble's passing, ask me what, what the criteria are, and that's why I asked Mr. Hurston, please read that into the record, because that's, that is all the charter says, and that's all the law that we are bound by. But we do want to try to do this in a fair and equitable way. And in the discussions, we feel like letting, that any qualified citizen put in an application, and then also, in speaking with the mayor, because he's the one that has to call workshops, can you all be here on October the 3rd for the workshop? That's the Tuesday prior to the Tuesday meeting in October.
Early in the afternoon.
That's up to y'all. You can.
I've got a district volleyball tournament that started at Cosby on October 3rd if I can come right out of school or something like that.
You all set the time? You're the boss.
What will work for you guys?
What, four?
Four o'clock?
The school's at 3:30.
Well, I've got, I've got to get back for, we're hosting a district volleyball tournament, so I'll kind of charge that. I can come down? What time do you work? 7:00, 7:00 at night?
Well, it don't have to be that day. I just threw that out there, because that's usually a traditional date. Y'all can pick another day.
Can we do it on that Wednesday? Or, no, 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 that's not, that's not Cosby. Tuesday and Thursday, we're hosting that tournament, and I'm the director. So can we do it on that Monday?
What about the Monday? What about Monday?
Before, maybe the second.
I've got a bad schedule.
Yeah.
I think I might work October 4th.
Second.
For, for, okay. I believe I can do that.
Okay. October 2nd at 5:00?
Okay.
Workshop. And that's the, you should have copies of the resumes beforehand?
Yeah, we'd make sure everybody's got them. Yes, sir.
October 2nd.
5:00.
Okay.
October 2nd.
On October the 2nd, 5:00, there will be a workshop to address the candidates.
Championship.
And what, what we will be doing is, we will have a list, probably, I don't know, by alphabetical order or something, whatever, and each candidate will be allowed to get to the podium and address the council for five minutes. And then at the end of that five minutes, the council would have the opportunity to ask any questions that they have. And then all the information that comes in that night will be taken under consideration by the council, and then it would be on the agenda at the October meeting the following week to fill the position. Is that, is that all clear and understandable? Is that, is everybody agreeing with that? Is that what everybody wants to do? Because that's been my understanding, speaking of that.
Okay. October 2nd is 5:00.
All right, thank you.
I would suggest we, so they make a motion that we follow those guidelines.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion, we follow the guidelines supplied by the charter.
Second. That's spelled out tonight.
Right. We've got a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes is no. I hear none.
I'd just like to, before we go on, Smith, take a second to remember Glenn Moore Smith also, that was a person that's been a big influence in this community for years too. I think his son, I thought I saw you, but the ones you know was thinking about you and your family, tenor, and tell the rest of them, okay?
Okay, item K is discussion of truck route on McMahon Street. Alderman, Mike Hansel.
Gentlemen, I know recently we passed the truck ordinance down town, and I've, I've not spoken with everybody on that block, and I'm not fishing for an ironclad response from you tonight. I guess I just wanted to spark some discussion. I've had a couple of complaints about, I think it's pronounced Cox, C-O-C-H, the chicken trucks that have come through. I don't want to gross everybody out, but if you haven't seen those things, sometimes they can be pretty nasty. And those are areas down there that are kind of relating to public health. You have food there on the corner, a couple of beauty shops and a barber shop. And I don't know that there's anything that we can do, but I would like to at least maybe try to address that. Maybe we could address the company itself and see if there's a different route that they can take. And I shared with somebody earlier, I wonder if they are meeting resistance from other places, and this is the route they decided to take. And if that be the case, I think we need to push the resistance up also. So like I say, I'm not fishing for a, a complete response from you tonight, but I would like to know your thoughts and what you think about it.
I'll be glad to do a little research on it myself. My initial response would be, it'd be hard to compose something out of state highway, but I'd be glad to research it.
But in a term like it's spoken, telling you a letter on a route.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Item M, discussion of animal shelter. Alderman Jeff Thatcher.
Thank you. I'll be, be very brief. I really feel that our current facility, albeit temporary, is running way beyond what I even thought it was going to run as far as the smoothness goes. By no means do I want to keep it down there. By no means am I going to renege on anything I said we'd probably do, I would do, as far as funding for a, the animal shelter as we know it out, that's, we have vacated. With that said, from an email I got and from a phone call and a discussion with the city manager, there's a bunch of questions that need to be answered before I put my approval to give them the first penny. The people of Newport, four years ago, three years ago, really built, bit the bullet and, and stepped out on a limb to help us do what we need to do, make things right, and get to where we needed to be in a lot of ways. I feel like we've accomplished a lot of things. I really do. And part of our pledge was that we, before that this term's over, get that tax rate lowered. And I still want to stand by that. From, I'll use your terminology, Mr. Thatcher, unless some, we have a stroke of bad luck, we're going to be able to do that. We can't tell a number, we can't say anything like that, because we don't know. But with the way the animal shelter is running right now, and I want to be a good citizen with the county, because I know it's a, to me, it should be a two-way street. I feel, and I, like I said, I'm not going to pinpoint with you guys, I think there needs to be a bunch of questions answered from a, who's running it, the management contract. You know, I see a couple commissioners every day at Cosby School, and they have a ton of questions as well, as well. I just, you know, Lisa, I thank you, you know, thank you for the way things are going. But by no means am I going to renege on this offer of implementing money to the shelter. But the more this thing unfolds, and if we're going to do what we need to do to help, and I haven't had a citizen tell me yet that we appreciate, that I, we appreciate what you're doing to hold, make the accountable, make the county, the county accountable and a team player. I don't really know what the answer is right now as far as moving forward, but I do know, based on an email I've got and a conversation with the city manager, there's a bunch of questions that need to be answered before we decide to move forward in, with 50 cents. So, and I'm going to escalate the conversations with the county mayor, but I need you to be with me to see exactly what's on their mind. Because I just feel like, I, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward right now. And I don't know what the dollar amount is, but Tina can probably tell me. I hadn't even asked her. Based on what we're going on right now, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing by offering animal control plus being a, have a temporary home for these animals. But we can't, you can't tell me, I only have to have this conversation with you, we have to be saving a ton of money.
Yes, we are, but I haven't sat down and.
Yeah, and I haven't asked you to either, but I, I'm just asking you guys, as far as this workshop goes, we need to ask, get some serious questions. I know there's an issue with sunshine law, which, well, I understand, and two, or more from two different entities get together, it's not the sunshine laws in effect. So we need one, two, five of us get together with some people from the county and lay all these cards on the table and see if we're both parties standing.
I'm glad that Mr. Thatcher's for watching after. Like I said, there's, there's a lot more questions, and it comes more every day. You think you got it sort of smoothed out, and something else happened, but I'm glad he's taking his time, and the city administrator and the rest of them taking their time to ask these questions. There's things that need to be settled before, like you said, before we go on.
Absolutely. That's my, that's my input.
Thank you. Jeff.
I think with previous discussions that have been had here, and some I've had with the city manager, I think the Green County plan is the ultimate goal, which is try, not exactly like theirs, but at least as close to as we can get and alleviate some of the burden on taxpayers.
I'd like to personally thank Jeff for all the work he's putting into it. I know he's put a bunch of time in it. And thank him for what he's done.
It's been hard, because there's a lot of good people, you know, believe in, in what they're doing out there. And I'm, I'm just doing what Mr. Gribble taught me to do, fight. And I'm fighting for the city. I'm not trying to get a pat on the back. I just, he taught me to fight, I'm going to fight.
I agree with you. I don't think we should offer up any sum of money without some strange action.
Questions, thank you.
Exactly right.
All right. Okay, moving to bids. The first bid, item A is consideration of bids for a two-ton truck for recycling.
Yes, this truck is a 1992 Chevrolet two-ton compactor truck, and we have it recycled. It's 25 years old, and it's pretty well getting wore out. We budgeted this money in capital outtake, and it is in there. I'm not asking for any money, I'm just asking to go ahead and let us go in and replace this truck and go ahead and get it bid out. And it is on the state contract bid. If you'll see it in your package.
Since it is on the contract, we actually do not have to do a formal bid out. You can choose now to approve it.
That's our recommendation, to, to get it off the state.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second? Got a second. Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Thatcher. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, you're still there, man. This is consideration of bids for a front end loader for the street department.
Yes. This loader, it's 24-year-old, pretty well wore out, and I'm asking to replace it with a new one. And we budgeted in the money, in the budget for this money.
Yes.
It's in there, and I'd like to do it on the state contract also.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call.
Alderman Jeff Thatcher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, man, for what you do. I see what you're doing in the city, and I really appreciate, we tell all you boys the same thing.
Okay, item C is consideration of bids for jobs of life for the fire department. Chief.
I'm basically, I'm basically here the same way that Ben was. The money's already in the budget to buy these jobs, and then when we get done with this, it's already there to buy the thermal imagers. We're going the same type of extrication tools, same type, the same brand extrication tools that we already have on the truck at the main station, will be in those same tools on the truck at City Park.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve for the jobs of life?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Thatcher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Okay. The, the next is the bids for the two thermal image cameras for the fire department. You say it's.
These therm, they'll be actually upgraded from the thermal imagers we have now. The ones we have now, we bought in 2003, and so it's time to upgrade. These are, they're just a better, more efficient tool.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
We have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Row call, please.
Alderman Jeff Thatcher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. And the one, why you there, man, is people, I think, if they see what sort of a gift of your money, trying to get some of this updated equipment, the 15, 20, 30-year-old equipment, we're spending more on time to refurbish it or redo it than it is to get stuff new. And that's why I hope that people realize maybe where the money's going, it's not being wasted.
Well, it's, we're like all the other departments in the city, with, public's welcome to come anytime, and we're, we're happy to show the tools that you all give us to do our job with. You know, show you how they work, handle them, touch them, everything. So we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Comments with citizens?
Well, there, I'm not a citizen, but I'll throw, throw something out there just to kind of follow behind what the chief said and also what Mr. Thatcher said. As he alluded to, when we did the tax increase three years ago, we, we gave a pledge that to give us three years to try to get the city back on its feet, both financially and also with its equipment, its, its buildings and those kinds of, and everything citywide. And Tina did a great job in working up a three-year plan, and we have stuck to it. And again, I know it sounded like we bought a lot of stuff here tonight, but we are on schedule to be where we need to be under that three-year plan that we pledged three years ago with y'all's support. You all got on board with it, and we discussed it in great detail, and we appreciate your support. We couldn't do anything that y'all support. And I, I feel like we are on track, and I feel like, as he said, that next year, unless, I always worry about a rock slide, you know? That's always my greatest fear when they, that, when they first were talking about Hurricane Irma headed right for East Tennessee. The first thing I said to Tina was, oh, man, please, not a rock slide, because that's a backbreaker for us. But if, unless we have some kind of catastrophe like that, I'm confident that we will be able to roll back the tax rate next year for our people. And I know with the need, and I know there was a need that the county had to increase taxes this year, I know that, that it'll be a welcome sight for them for that to happen. And that's, that, if that's, you all have stayed the course, I salute you for it. I know you take a lot of heat. You're the ones that take the heat. You know, I've got the easy job. We got, you know, sometimes it don't seem like it, but we, we just have to get the work done. You're the guys that have to answer for it to the voters and take the heat for it, and I know you get, you get a lot of heat for the things that go on. But like the vice mayor said, I hope people realize what's been accomplished and how far the city has come, and that's a tribute to you guys. And, and I appreciate it, and I hope that the, the citizens see it and understand what, what has happened in the last, almost, well, we're in our third year. I just hope that they can see that.
I appreciate what you and Tina have done too. I appreciate what you and Tina have done too, and Tina watching our money, both of you working together, all your staff and stuff, all you people working together, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Comments from citizens?
Greta Carr.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just state your name. I know it.
Yes, sir. My name's Greta Carr. I wasn't organized enough this month to formally get on the agenda, and I apologize for that, but I'm here tonight representing East Tennessee Art Scapes, which is actually located also on McMahon Avenue right there behind the coffee shop. I'm here tonight to tell y'all one thing and ask y'all one thing. Some of y'all probably already know about the courthouse bench beautification project that we're working on down here. Well, we've been really fortunate, the Cock County Partnership was generous enough to take care of all of the materials for us, and we've got some really good quality lumber that's going in there, and some really amazing quality paint that's going to really last for years and years. And the leadership class of 2017 is doing a lot of the work with us, the grunt work. They were out there, they've already primed the bench ends, which you can probably see now, they're already primed white. And what East Tennessee Art Scapes is handling right now underway is the, the recruitment and organization of a lot of our local artists to paint some really unique and special images on these benches to make them colorful and update them and really make them something special for Cock County citizens to enjoy for decades to come, because these new benches are really going to last. So we've got like Joan Beaver, for example, Rick and Wendy Knight, Bill Jones, David Freeman, Thelma Ogles, you know, and that's not all, but that's just to give you an example. And what we're doing is, we're going to put official Tennessee state symbols and icons on these benches, so like one's going to have an iris, one, of course, will have the flag, the Tennessee walking horse, a raccoon, just different, and a little bit of information. We'll have a didactic panel, which is like a sign with information describing these things down there. And I actually, I gave Mayor Ball informally...
I got mine turned in with a, for a donation.
Did you, wonderful sir?
But if you don't need it now, I can pull it back.
I'm very glad to hear that. So, yeah, we are taking donations to East Tennessee Art Scapes to get the rest of the little bit of funding up we need just for incidentals and to be able to pay these wonderful local artists for their work. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure to tell you about, to make sure y'all, everybody here knew about. And if you don't care, I'll just, if you don't care just to pass that, I'll show you. That's the image, I brought the wrong file with me, I would have more of those forms. That's the images, y'all already know what the old courthouse benches look like, and that shows you what the new ones are going to look like. And if you don't care, I'll give you some of these. We also, right now, East Tennessee Art Scapes have a, our first famous artist that we're real excited about, it's Matthew Ashley, who is actually from right here in Cosby. He lives here, his artwork is on exhibit. There's an example of one, that's drawn from Tombstone that he did, and he does a lot of celebrity fan artwork. He's on display down there. We're volunteering, so we're only open, we're only open Friday evenings and a little while on Saturdays right now, but we're working to build that up as we build our volunteer base and build up our boards. And the thing that I wanted to ask you all about is, we're hoping to partner with Keith Cock County, beautiful, and just some of our volunteers, parents and stuff in the community to do an event with kids on Fridays after school. Right now, we're taking some kids, just kids from the grammar school, because we've got a real limited space right now on McMahon Avenue where the fabric nook used to be, it's real small in there, and doing some arts and like science activity projects with them after school on Fridays. And we were hoping that you all would allow us to bring a group of kids down here to our river walk and play with sidewalk chalk down here. So we wanted to make sure that that was okay, and also to see if y'all might help us out with somebody that could make sure that if it wasn't still raining right now, that we could take care of the duck waste that ends up on the walk sometime before that. The date we're hoping to do that would be the first Friday in October, the Friday right before the street festival. We figured y'all didn't mind, but we just wanted to formally get your permission to do that. That's what I'm here to ask you about.
On, on the ducks, I can tell you that we have no control over the ducks.
Oh, yes, sir. It's hard to feed them on one end, and I expect them to do something for the other end.
But every morning, Tim's guys go down and clean the sidewalk, and every night, the ducks come and make a deposit.
Is that right? I wasn't sure, and I hadn't, I hadn't been down there myself to walk and walk, because I've been to busy all this year.
That is a constant battle that we wage.
Yes, sir.
Tim, Tim is better equipped to address all that now.
Tim can handle that.
Tim can handle that.
In the past, I've checked with TWRF about this, and there may be something federally we can do to get these things removed.
Well, we, what we found a couple of years ago was, the domesticated ducks could be moved, but the wild ducks could not. And they were wild, and we had a lot of people come and catch them and take them to their farms or their ponds, but wild ducks can fly. So, I mean, if you, if you take them away, they can fly right back, you know, so, but the domesticated ducks, as I understand it, now, I'm not a, you know, I'm not acting for the old ducks, but, or geese, but the domesticated ones, as I understand it, don't fly, but the wild ones do, and they, we can't bother them because they're migratory birds, and now, at the federal level, there may be something, I don't know. That's what we had, that's where we had to go in dealing with the vultures, you know, which is the federal level. And we tried a couple, about three years ago, I guess, I'm not sure now, but we, we were told that if they were wild, we could relocate them, that if they weren't wild, they'd be long. And because they, like I said, they can fly, you know, you can take them away and they can fly.
A lot of people like to watch them though, too, send them to the river.
Yeah, the kids love to see the ducks, and if it's being cleaned that often, I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue, it was just a concern, one of the parents had brought it up, so I thought...
But now they will, once you get your chalk down, they'll come back tonight and add to the...
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and I understand. Well, as soon as it rains, it'll all be gone.
That's why I didn't mind, too.
It's just a temporary joy for them, we don't...
Okay. Thank you, Greta.
Thank you.
You're so good. Who was your principal?
Oh, I believe it was Connie Bobb.
I had to say that.
That's loaded, quick.
Yeah, that was loaded, good. Any more comments from citizens? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? Roll.